Good afternoon, this is our last session, which is called Public Comments Number Two. At this time, we'll be moving into Public Comments until 6:00 PM, or until we're done. Any person who wishes to make public comments, as do so at this time. We will start with the list of speakers who have signed up online through the City Council portal or the Google Form. Following this list, any other persons who have signed up here today, I'm sorry. Following this list, any person who have signed up here today can make comments. Please note that the signup sheet for the Public Comments is located next to the podium. Is there signup sheet there? Okay, nothing, okay. When your name is called, you will have three minutes at the podium to provide your comments. When the lights turn green, you should begin. Please begin by providing your name. When the lights turn yellow, you will have one minute left. And when the light turn red, your time is up. Okay, first person?
Franya Hutchins. Assalamualaikum, peace be upon y'all. My name is Zora Lasagna, and I'm a staff member at Council on American Islamic Relations, the Pittsburgh chapter, which is a civil rights and advocacy organization with more than thirty chapters in the country. As a person who does intake for civil rights complaints, I'm deeply saddened to see so many Islamophobia created, so much Islamophobia created in the country due to Trump's Islamophobic policies. In Pittsburgh, school bullying incidents went up recently, and the targets were mainly children of refugees. I believe that this kind of Islamophobia comes about due to ignorance of others' culture and religion. Our attorneys and social workers are working hard to improve the situation in the schools. A good chunk of Americans realize that Muslims are no different from any other Americans. Our children attend schools and colleges. Our women folks are contributors in the workforce, and the men are professionals in the fields, or who work hard, pay their taxes, and contribute to the society just as any average American would. In addition, Muslim women and youth have gone out into the streets to help the homeless. There's even a women's shelter run by Muslim women, which was begun in the year 2013. And to date, they have sheltered eighty-five individuals, which comprise of people from different nationalities. Today, I want to speak a little about a group of Muslim physicians who came together to start a free clinic in Braddock area. Their aim was to provide basic health care to the uninsured residents in and around Braddock. The free clinic operates on the weekends from 9:30 to 2:00 PM. A group of thirteen Muslim physicians, three physicians assistants, and four medical assistants serve this clinic in volunteer capacities. On average, they see four hundred to five hundred patients a year. Since 2011, they have seen and treated almost three thousand patients. These are just few examples of services offered by Muslims in the city. These Muslims save lives, and they serve communities in our city. Islam is founded on the principles of serving our fellow humans around us. Our relationship with our Creator is not complete without serving His creations. As our Prophet, peace be upon Him, said, "He is not a believer whose stomach is full while his neighbor goes to bed hungry." There is another saying of the Prophet, peace be upon Him, in which someone asked him, "What are the best deeds in Islam?" And the Prophet, peace be upon Him, replied, "Spread peace and feed the people." In conclusion, I want to acknowledge that we have also received much support from our allies in the city, and we often get asked, "What can we do for you?" Now, that's a good question. We have a training coming up on July 20th called Bystander Intervention Training. This training will basically coach you how to react when you become a witness to a situation where someone is being harassed. If you want to join this training or know more about it, you can call me at my CARE Pittsburgh number, 412-606-3601. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kiona Blackney. Edward Progar. Carolina Essaro. Stephanie Hongan. Aya Atal.
Hi, my name is Alicia Cabral. I work with a program called Immigrant Services and Connections that serves the entire county, and with a program that provides educational programming for immigrant and refugee youth. I spoke briefly earlier today, but I wanted to reiterate something that I brought up earlier, which is that while I appreciate and commend the efforts that the Commission has made, that the mayor and City Council and the police chief have in being more welcoming and publicly supporting immigrant residents of the city. What I have seen with my clients and my friends is that when they try to access city services, they often don't receive that same treatment that we are hearing from the higher-ups. So this sentiment is not necessarily trickling down to the people that residents regularly interact with on a day-to-day basis. Having a multicultural unit in the police department is great, but I personally feel that the entire police department should be in the multicultural unit. Intermittent trainings aren't enough. There needs to be a cultural shift, and I think that the Commission could play a big role in being an advocate for that. We've talked a lot today about how the presidential, how the president's policies have changed attitudes and rhetoric. There is a proposal for legislation to ban immigrants from coming who might be considered what they call a "public charge", meaning someone who could be potentially a drain on resources. This is a pretty blatant discrimination against people who have health problems, who are poor and uneducated. Our immigration system is already biased in favor of people who are wealthy and well-educated. And I think that the city needs to be a role model for being inclusive to all people, not just people who are coming as engineers or to teach at our universities, but anyone who is trying to make a better life for themselves and their families in the United States. So I know that that's very much a federal policy, but I think that Pittsburgh has the potential to be a leader in the United States on a federal level and a national level, publicly making a commitment to be welcoming to all immigrants. Thank you.
Sharif Ali. Mark Affeltrenger. Arif Mohammed. Manal Sarkadi. Dana Gali. Ian Dickinson. Oh, sorry!
Hi, my name is Dana Gali. My case is a little bit different. I came here to the United States for my daughter. She had an accident in Egypt in 2007, and she need a life-saving transplant. And Egypt, they didn't help. We collect a lot of money to get the surgery. She did transplant in 2008. We came in 2008, and she did transplant in 2009. But her body rejected the organ after two weeks. We live here since 2008 by visitor visa. Visitor visa, you are not allowed to have ID. You are not allowed to get driver license. You are not allowed to anything. You are not allowed to work. My husband gets stopped by a police officer one time last year, and they refused to let him go. Even my daughter, she was very, very sick. She's in septic shock. And we have to go to the hospital, and he said, "No." You know, and the other one, he was kind, and he let him go. You know, we have to find like way to figure out how can we continue. We don't have her medical care in Egypt. Her situation is so bad. They left her belly open. She live in Central Line. She doesn't have anything in her belly. She did transplant, intestine transplant, and now it failed. Took it out, and they left her totally without anything. Her situation became like worst. Even now, she's in the hospital right now. I came from there. I'm just asking if we can find any exit from this, or just let us allow to have ID, to have driver license, you know, to allow to us to get a work, to help our children. I left last year to visit my parents. Like, I didn't see them five years. And I went to the embassy, the American Embassy in Egypt. The Consular, she took my passport, and she canceled my visa. She hold me there eight months, away from my daughter and my kids here. I told her, "Please, my daughter, she's sick. She's seriously ill." She said, "No, I will never let you go." I show her her picture. Her belly totally open. She live in Central Line. No one can take her. I am a physician. And but I'm not allowed to practice here. I ask her, "Please," four times. I apply and go, and I met the same Consular. And she said, "I will never let you go." Until the Muslim here on the mosque, ICP, they collect a lot of money and get me a humanitarian visa. But still, humanitarian visa need extension. And the immigration hold me like seven months, and they didn't give me an answer. They just, we are threatened. Our life here, it's just threatened every day from immigration. I need help.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Ian Dickinson. Dixie Timmets. Ken Boaz. Alisa Grishman. And that's it for the people that are listed on here. So now, anyone else is so welcome to come and speak.
Okay, come on.
Sure.
I'm just asking if someone can help me with this status. You know, I need help.
You've got my number, right? You, definitely call the Commission number, Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. And we'll talk about resources and connections that we may, that might be able to help you. Thanks. Thank you very much.
What we're doing, we're just holding over until if any additional individuals like to come in for a public comment. We're still early, and we're gonna wait a few minutes. What I mean by maybe fifteen, twenty minutes. Or half an hour.
Yeah, so there were a number of people that told me that they wouldn't be able to get here until like 5:15, 5:30. So I am gonna wait at least a half hour. So you are welcome to stay or go as you need to. This is being recorded, so that if even somebody comes late, this can still be valuable for outreach, education. These public comments will be available on DVD. They will also be available online on YouTube clips. So we have a really fine innovation and performance office that is very eager to do this work and offer to help us edit it according to topic so that it can be more useful both to the Commission and to other organizations or individuals that want to use it. So for those who are working on intercultural or interfaith efforts and might find it useful, please do contact the Commission. We'll get you a DVD for free. And you can choose between the different kinds of topics that you want. We had speakers earlier in the day, experts, lawyers, advocates. We can take public comment and put it together with those, after those speakers, so that there is a topic unity that might be useful for you. We also really encourage you. There's lots of good information out on the table. Thank you so much, Commissioner Craig, Chairman Craig. See ya. So there are quite a few organizations that left referral cards. So there might well be, there was the Community Justice Project that was here earlier, Dana. They might actually be able to help you. Community Justice Project. So I think their information is out there as well. I also wanna just, while we have this extra time, thank the staff of the Commission so much. There are people behind the scenes, behind the Commissioners, that often their faces are not out in the public, but they work tirelessly to help investigate cases of discrimination, to connect people to resources, and to really be supportive and caring to those that may not have the resources for the kind of legal defense that are often needed in the larger system. So I'm gonna embarrass Rachel Salem right here. She does so much more than like the normal administrative assistant. She designed our flyers. She is incredibly warm and welcoming to people who come to the Commission. Sarah Kenter, the Deputy Director, is outside here, so she can't take a bow, but she also assists with investigations and does intake. So, and then our Director Torres is also working tirelessly to make sure that we address not only individual cases, but we look at larger patterns of discrimination, systemic patterns. So thank you for waiting. Oh, and I should thank the stenographer here, who is typing everything up as we speak. So these comments will also be available as transcripts as well. I do have a question for the people in the audience. One of the things that we didn't have time to address today, but I've heard is a big problem in both immigrant and Muslim communities, is the difficulty in finding housing and housing discrimination. Has anyone here experienced being turned away because you were dressed a certain way, or you had an accent or didn't speak English well? Or do you know of anybody who has experienced that kind of discrimination?
You know, it's not happening, but you know, it happened with me. You know, I don't have experience. I don't have experience, you know. And someone hit me from the back on Oakland Highway. And you know, I was alone. I was tired. I get hit on my arm. She apologized. She gave me all her information. And someone helped me to go to the side and take the information. I have all her information, and she put her name on the phone, my phone. And you know, I don't have that experience. I should call the police. You know, I believe she gave me her information. She will be fine. I will be fine and give her everything. Next day, when I called her insurance, she said, "No, ma'am, it's your fault." I said, "It's Oakland, 5:30 PM. It's one August, the first of August. It's, no one can just come right away in front of anyone. She hit me automatically from the back. I have the picture. I have her picture in front of my car." They said, "No, ma'am." And now, they fix her car. They send to collection, and collection ask me to pay for her eleven thousand dollars. And you know, I keep asking, "Who can help me?" All the, I don't have money to pay for the lawyer. Everyone, like the hour per, five hundred, three hundred. I went to the court and ask, "I wanna do pro se by myself. I can't talk." The judge, he knows Pittsburgh. He knows the traffic. He knows everything. She totally hit me from the back. But she lied to her insurance, but you know, because it's my fault. I didn't call the police. And now, I went to the Christian Legal Aid, and they said, "Just, just don't do anything. Let them send for you." I said, "This is not fair. This is not fair, you know. At least the judge, when he see the picture, when he saw her picture, he will figure out whose fault. I wanna go to her address, but you know, because I'm not, you know, I dressed like this. She look at me like, "Oh, you know, I can just ignore this." Even my house is now on the street. Most of the people, when they stop on the traffic light, they look, "You wearing this? You, ah, you look." They look to you, "Why? This has not happened before. This is very recent, like one year, just very, very recent. Someone in front of Joint Eagle, he wanna hit us, me and my kids. I just take my hand. He didn't stop, and he ran away. All the people, they scream on him. He doesn't care." You know, this is very, very like, it didn't happen before. Like, I live here since 2008. It's, Pittsburgh wasn't like this. Like, this is, you know, what can I do?
Thank you.
My name is Tracy Merrick. And I came here to listen today and to learn about some of the issues that are in the communities around us. I'm part of a couple of anti-racism teams that are actively trying to learn and listen and be agents of change in the Pittsburgh and Allegheny County areas. It's very easy for us, as the white majority, to hear these stories and kind of dismiss them as one-off instances. I'm sorry that some of my friends from the Islamic Center are not here to share the large number of occurrences they have of experiences that would echo what we've heard this afternoon. I don't know what to say. I was not prepared to talk, but my heart aches. And I want to see a Pittsburgh which is consistent with what our mayor has said. A place that loves all people and has room for all people to become all that they can fully become. And that's consistent with the values in the faith tradition of which I'm a part. And I also know that it's part of the faith traditions, other faith traditions that are in the Pittsburgh area and some of these folks who have spoken this afternoon. We need to make a bigger place in our hearts for these people. And I'm sorry that I am not better prepared to speak. But I am dealing with some cases of systemic racism, implicit bias, in the groups that I work with. And we, we just really hope that this community can affect some changes that it needs to affect. And we don't accept the status quo, either in this community or in this country, as being what it has to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have been in Pittsburgh for, my name is Noor, and I have been in Pittsburgh for last twenty-four years. And in this country, thirty-two years. And this is the first time, you know, like people, we're very comfortable. I was a graduate student here, then I'm working here. I'm an engineer at the Department of Environmental Protection. And I'm also one of the board members at CARE. This is the first time, you know, people like me are afraid and scared. Like, I used to go out at night for a walk in my neighborhood. I don't do that anymore because I heard stories, you know, like things happen. So this is, but I am hopeful that it will pass. I'm very hopeful that it will pass. Human are human, just few. Like, you know what I believe? I believe we are human, and among us, it's not Muslim, Christians, Buddhists, or whatever, like, it's not bad, these people, that people. Some, among the people, some people are, just very few people are bad, and they do bad acts. And if we believe in God, whether we believe or not, first of all, we are human. And then other thing is like, if we believe in God, He's one, right? Only one. And He created all of us, black, white, brown, all. And then He put us at different, you know, places, different locations. So, so that we need, you know, we have to get together and get to know each other. This is the thing. And I believe, majority people believe that Republican, Democrat, whatever, in this country, majority people believe in that. Just few. And I'm very hopeful, because my kids, I mean, they don't have any other countries. Like, recent, I will give you an experience. We were in Spain and Morocco. So in Morocco, they were asking my son, that, "Where are you from?" They're saying, "From America. We're from Pittsburgh, America. They're born in Pittsburgh." And they're saying, "Where are you originally from?" They're saying, "We are originally from America. My parents are originally from different countries." So this is the country they know, you know. So it has to get better, especially for our kids' sake, you know. They cannot live in hatred or in, under discrimination. So I am optimistic that, you know, things will get better. That's why I'm here today.
Thank you, and thank you for your work with CARE.
About your question on housing discrimination, actually, at CARE, we have not received any cases, cases on housing discrimination. But I can collect that info and send it to you. I can do that for you.
It'd be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Another thing is like, many times, people don't report the discrimination. It's like, including me. Like, right after the election, I was driving. I drive through the same path, every same road, every day. Like, I work in Department of Environmental Protection, that office is in Washington's Landing. And I live in Upper Sibley. So my route is the same every single day. So one day, I was driving, and then there was a gentleman in the truck. He started shouting at me. And then, you know, like, when I was not looking at him, he started banging on my, you know, car. But I was just holding my stairs. I was not, you know, giving him look. But in this case, like, when I told my husband, and especially my son, who is twenty-three years, he was very upset. And, "Mom, you have to report it." But the thing is like, this person knows me. Probably, he can, it is not very difficult to find me. I drive through the same path every day. So I don't know, like, so I avoided reporting it, you know. I thought like, it's his thing, you know. It's not mine. I just let it go. I'm sure he'll, I don't know. If he has little bit humanity in him, he will feel bad later on. That was my thing. So like that, similar, you know, similarly, many people will not report, do not report. And you know, they just kept silent, for safety reason, most of the time.
This is Deputy Director Sarah Kenter. And she's gonna tell us a little bit, or Sarah, would you tell us a little bit about the process of filing a complaint of discrimination?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So we just wanted to very briefly overview how you can file a complaint, what that would look like in our office, so that you have some idea. If you do experience discrimination, we want to make sure that you understand what you can expect from us. So if you are treated differently in the city of Pittsburgh on one of the bases that we had mentioned before, race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, disability, familial status in housing, or status as a victim of domestic violence, and in the area of employment age over forty, you can file a complaint with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. Sexual orientation and gender identity as well. Thank you. The harm must have occurred within a one-year period for you to file with our office. So what that means is we have a one-year statute of limitations. And the harm must have also occurred within the jurisdiction of the city of Pittsburgh. So if you work in the city, if you come to the city, if you live in the city, you can file here. What would What would happen is, you would come to our office, or if you are unable to come to the office, we would speak to you over the phone to establish jurisdiction, which means we would establish time, place, and subject matter. Time being that one-year statute of limitations, place, within the city of Pittsburgh, and subject matter, a difference in treatment because of discriminatory conduct. We would craft a complaint form, which is a charge, and you would sign off on that charge, that everything in there is true and accurate to the best of your ability. The person that you would be, or the entity that you're filing against, would receive a copy of that complaint, and they would have to answer that complaint to the commission and to the complainant within a specified period of time, which might either be 10 business days, if it's at, or 10 calendar days, excuse me, if it's a housing complaint, or 30 days if it's an employment or public accommodations complaint. You receive that answer as well. From there, the complaint is given to an investigator to begin the investigation, where they would collect witness statements and testimony, subpoena documents and information that's necessary to determine, based upon the facts, whether someone was treated differently on the bases that they allege. So that's what the commission staff would be doing. Then, this commission staff brings that information to our commissioners, who ultimately decide, based on looking at that evidence, whether or not someone was treated differently. A reasonable person would conclude that someone was treated differently on the bases that they allege. The process, time period for the investigation varies based on the case. For our housing cases, we try to do those within 100 days. For our employment cases, they can range from six to nine months. It really does depend on the type of complaints, what the allegations are, and what kind of information the commission would have to collect. A case can close in a variety of different ways. And our commissioners, again, determine those types of closures. We do work very hard to conciliate and mediate complaints, meaning that we like to bring both parties to the table, talk about the issues, and try to come to some satisfactory resolution with both of the parties. At the beginning of the complaint process, we rely on mediation to do that, where one third-party neutral person, who never sees the complaint ever again, but only deals with it in the mediation, works with both the parties. If the commission finds reasonable cause that discrimination did occur, then we would work on a conciliation, where we bring the parties together to remedy the discrimination that we have reasonable evidence to show. So that's the basics of the complaint process.
And then what happens if the respondent, the person who is, what if that respondent is found to indeed have carried out discrimination as decided, as shown by the evidence collected by the investigation, and then the decisions of the commissioners that look at that evidence? And then that respondent refuses to positively respond or constructively respond to repair harm in the conciliation process? What happens if that respondent is non-compliant?
So the commission employs a solicitor. And it's important to note that the commission is an independent agency. We have our own solicitor, it's not part of a city law department. He works directly for the commission. And should the commissioners come down with an order that says, "To remedy this harm, you must take training, respondent, you must provide back pay, you must institute different policies." If they do not comply with that, they are in noncompliance, and our solicitor would enforce the order that our commissioners have handed down. And they would do that in Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
So one of the powers that the commission has is to subpoena witnesses, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Yes. And so, as a law enforcement agency, the commission has powers to enforce that other commissions don't. So could you talk a little bit about that, that process of enforcement as you have seen it in action over the past years?
Well, so if a respondent would be unwilling to provide us information, we would do what Commissioner Gerhardt is talking about, which is subpoena, which is compelling someone's testimony. And we have done that in the past. There has been times where we either compel a person or compel documents to come to us. And we do have the power to enforce that. Again, that would be another thing that the solicitor, the attorney for the commission, would enforce. It's actually kind of rare for that to happen. Usually, we see compliance with what we request.
One of the fears that's been expressed to me in the past is the fear of retaliation. Could you describe the protections against retaliation that there are?
Sure. Retaliation means any difference in treatment for complaining about discriminatory conduct, whether with us, the commission, or with your employer, or to a place of business. If you complain about discrimination, and then you are terminated or subjected to a different terms and conditions because of that complaint, that is retaliation, and that is illegal. The commission will take that complaint. And it's slightly easier to prove, in the sense that you, if you have information that you had complained about discrimination, and then you have some adverse action against you, it's a pretty clear-cut issue.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
No problem, thank you.
Hello, my name is Manal Sorkati. I'm a volunteer with the Muslim Women Association of Pittsburgh. We provide many community services. One of them is running a guest house, which provides shelter for women and children that's in need. We call it "guest house" because the name "shelter," it gives some negativity to it. We give them a temporary housing, up to three months, free of charge. We provide the house, pay the utilities, and we provide food as well. It's, we do not discriminate against any religion or nationalities of origin. And up to today, we served over 60 people for the last couple of years, and that they receive our services at the guest house. Our guest house is located in Penn Hills, and it can accommodate two families at a time, or up to eight unrelated people. That's a maximum, up to eight. We help women to get jobs and find a permanent housing, and to be independent. And we provide beside the housing and the food and other services. We give them bus passes in case they wanted to go to work, or some of them, they have language barrier, so to go to English classes. And as I said, we covered over 60 people. And we are here to help the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ken Boez.
Hello, my name is Ken Boez. Born and raised here in Pittsburgh. A visiting instructor at the Humanity Center at the University of Pittsburgh, and a retired professor of English at the University of Pittsburgh, and a member of the Pittsburgh BDS, Boycott, Divestment, Sanction Coalition. Thank you for holding these hearings, and I'm very happy to be able to speak here. What I'd like to briefly comment upon is what has been silenced and disappeared in the struggle around refugees and immigrants in Pittsburgh and nationwide, but we'll stay with Pittsburgh. Organizations have done a wonderful job in helping immigrants and refugees and undocumented human beings. However, while they have covered Syrian refugees, and Nepalese, and Bhutanese, and people from many countries who are in great need of help, and who are getting help here in Pittsburgh, from, yes?
Pull the microphone just a little away from, yes.
And are getting help from organizations like the Jewish Family and Children's Services, the Jewish Federation, the Anti-Defamation League. All of these organizations, while they are doing great work, have refused to recognize the plight of the Palestinian people. The Palestinian people have been occupied for 70 years, and have been refugees in their own country for 70 years. The Israeli government has continued to collectively punish them, deny them their civil and human rights. And the very same organizations that are helping other refugees in this city are collaborating in oppressing the Palestinian people's rights. This is an hypocrisy that we cannot let stand. Israel and their supporters in this city, who are many, do not get a pass when it comes to violating international law and human rights. We need to call it the way it is. If we're going to work for the human rights and the civil rights of immigrants from Syria, Bhutan, Nepal, and wherever, as we well should, we need to do the same thing for the Palestinians. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ken. So I think that Ken was the last person that was actually on the list. So anybody else that has come to comment, you're welcome to come up now.
Hi, my name is Carol Gonzalez, and I'm a retired history teacher and have lived in Pittsburgh since 1973. And I really just wanted to come in solidarity with this effort, and thanks for the Human Rights Commission to hold these hearings. And as a very involved Pittsburgh citizen, just really wanted to express my own solidarity for any efforts that the city makes in terms of being a sanctuary city, in terms of realizing our goals of being a diverse, inclusive, and welcoming city. And not have that just be words, but realize those goals. And my presence is really simple, just the solidarity in that, and want to do everything I can as a citizen to help that effort. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Celeste Scott. I live in Homestead, lifelong resident of Pittsburgh. I'm the Affordable Housing Organization for Pittsburgh United. I'm always going to come and stand in solidarity for human rights. So I do commend you for having this, this is necessary and important. So I will be in the fight with you, in the struggle, especially Helen, who I love. So just thank you for having us, and if you need me, I'll be around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it is about, it's almost 5:25. There were other people who said that they would be here, but I also don't want to hold you all. So I think that we're going to gavel this closed? Big gavel? Again, I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart. You know, this was a very informative hearing. You provided us with very critical information. You also moved us very much as well. So the kind of caring and support that you show to each other, you know, whatever your identity, is a powerful example. The courage of those who do bring forward complaints. It's hard to do that, but you are serving the community by doing it. And we have one more person who can comment. I un-gavel, I un-gavel.
Wow, right to the front. My name is Barney Alwasser. I'm Executive Director of Pittsburgh United, which is a coalition in Pittsburgh and the region that has brought together faith, environment, community, and labor organizing groups to really fight issues of justice. And pretty central to that is the right to employment, the right to being secure in your community, the right to being in possession of all of your rights, your human rights. And we've been involved in struggles, and I always speak loosely when I say "we have been involved" because it's the organizations in our coalition that do this work. But all of the unions, churches, synagogues, mosques, all of the environmental groups get the connection of human rights and the kind of attack that's openly going on. And some of these institutions are struggling with their own issues. A lot of their members voted in ways that really are a little shocking to many of us. But the reality of having to get folks educated and to understand that they not only have to get it, but they have to get out and do something about it, is what we're working on. So just really appreciate the leadership of the commission in keeping these issues in front of the whole community. And keep it up, because we need leadership, and thoughtful leadership, and you're providing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barney. Okay, I mean it this time.